Well, now that we've finished that subject, uh, Tony, are you expecting Todd tonight?
I am.
Good. Otherwise, I'd have to figure out what to say for the opening thing. All right, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can't hear anyone. Is anyone alive? Oh, I heard something.
Uh, we're all alive.
Excellent.
We're just holding our breath, waiting for you.
I know. Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Bedford Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, September 10th, 2024. Uh, need to read the notice. So pursuant to legislation H 3548, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extending the suspension of certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting of the Bedford Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members or the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right, so we have a business session this evening. Uh, lots of things on the session, uh, during the session. Um, so I'm just gonna go through them quickly and then we can go one by one, but just to list them all off. Bedford Day preparation, update on comprehensive plan preparation, update on pending carwow road comprehensive permit, updating on zoning bylaw reorganization, updating housing priorities, residency district dimensional data, update on potential zoning bylaw amendments for the special town meeting, and then liaison to boards and committees and staff updates in minutes. Right, number one, Bedford Day preparation.
Shall I talk about the items that I put in your packet?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so I, um, I updated the three-slide PowerPoint that I did last year on the comprehensive plan. Um, it's kind of short and sweet, but it possibly does the trick. It talks about the, well, it shows a diagram of the elements that go into the plan, um, feeding into the goals and policies and implementation actions in the center. And then it's just got a set of bullet points, um, which might as a reminder talking points. It could be used as handout. Um, it could also be put on the board as a display. Um, the other things I'll put in your packets are the, um, the website page about the zoning bylaw reorganization project. I haven't turned that into any kind of bullet points or anything at this point, but we could talk about that. Um, and the list of zoning amendments that were targeting for special town meeting. Um, the one that's not been included in the ad there is the one about, um, formalizing the ZBA and building inspectors, what they call their protocol, that changes to one and two family dwellings in non-conforming situations. So that's currently not been included in the ad. It looked a little bit more complicated. Um, so unless we really rush around and advertise it for a hearing at the next meeting, then, you know, it might be better to leave it till, till spring and for Judy to wrap it in. Um, so those are the materials I've given you to, uh, as a starting point. So we could also provide a hard copy of the last comprehensive plan, and we could, um, enlarge a couple of the snapshot pages from that, which, you know, have, um, you know, nice-looking graphs and bits of maps or pictures or whatever, maybe, you know, a couple of topics, just to give people a sense of what a plan covers, what it might, what kinds of things it might look like or include.
Amy.
So my thoughts for Bedford Day are not to really give handouts. I think that most people won't really want them, but we'll take them and throw them away. I think there should just be some presentations and, um, some statements about how we would love your input. We will, will be forming committees um, over time to create the different sections of the comprehensive plan, and we'll look forward to having your inputs and, or being on the committee. And we'll let you know, and we'll give more information. So it's really just a, here's some info, get prepared. That's my opinion.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Mr. Kittens?
I'm, if folks volunteer to help out with the comprehensive plan, I'm, I think my camera's dying. I, I, I swear that's not the room. I, if folks volunteer to help out with the comprehensive plan, I'm, yeah, facilitating community engagement sessions and the like, I'm, are we inclined to accept that? Or are we keeping that to members of the board and, uh, staff and, you know, other boards?
Uh, is there an open question for anyone, or Tony?
Well, that is the question. As to how, um, if you want to rule that in now, like, um, do we want to solicit interest in among residents to serve on the steering committee or to simply be involved in the process and be part of either, you know, a mailing list or, or, um, perhaps a group of people that are purposely um, identified to be stakeholders in the process, but not necessarily members of the steering committee?
Ms. Lloyd?
I can tell you that I had, um, started being on the planning board at the very end of the last comprehensive plan, and it was, um, members of the planning board and some members of town communities. That was a very tight and small steering committee, and then many people from the town were involved in different subjects or different, um, sections of the comprehensive plan, depending on what they were interested in. So my assumption is that it was gonna just be pretty much the same thing for this one. So.
The, the, the reason I, I ask is, you know, I remember I'm participating in a couple of Saturday morning workshops and I'm, there was a fair number of people there when we broke up into groups of maybe eight, 10, a dozen people. I am each with a, a topic focus and saying, oh gee, you know, would it be helpful to have, uh, volunteers to help facilitate those? Um, I, I think at the time, just took volunteers. I'm, but my thought was, oh, would it make sense to, uh, I'm, you know, put the, uh, the offer out there if folks wanted to help with that? I don't have, I don't have a stronger opinion in one way or the other. I'm, it's just a thought that occurred to me.
I, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to, to have lots of people on the steering committee, only because it's not so much about, the steering committee doesn't deal with content as much as it deals with just making sure everything keeps on going in the right direction, keeps on, each different subject is dealt with in the right way, and the content is each committee. So the steering committee is, is sort of administrative in a way, in my opinion.
Yeah, I always didn't even think of steering committee, but I think question answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Catherine?
Um, yeah, just for information, the, the last comprehensive plan process started with two public workshops with, I think it was three or four, four topics covered at each, yeah, four at each, I think. Um, and those discussions were actually each led by a planning board member. So they had a pretty strong planning board at the time, and they were obviously, you know, I, I wasn't even employed here. I was, I was, uh, interested in the job and I came along, um, but, uh, I was impressed that the planning board members, you know, were all prepared to brief themselves on, on a topic and say something about it and then invite discussion and lead the discussions, and then, and then, and then they took notes and wrote them up. Um, the, the only danger of bringing in an outsider who's maybe on a different board or has a particular topic interest to do that is, um, they might not have discussed things as much in the round with the rest of the planning board or have as much of a planning orientation. Um, so then, I mean, that's just, just one thought. The other thing is that the, I think the steering committee last time, it had representatives from various other town committees that are closely related to the plan, plus several floating, um, like at-large members who were appointed. Um, and there was an attempt to sort of get some kind of breadth of representation on it. There is an advantage in having some continuity of a group if they're prepared to stick with it, because then you get the trade-offs between different topics that are pulling in different directions addressed, and you get the, um, the synergies identified where one action can serve multiple goals. So there is something, if you can get a larger group and carry them along with you, um, there is something to be said for having that continuity across the breadth of topics.
So do you know if the concept from other boards would be that we would reach out to the boards and request a member from each board to be part of the steering committee, or is that too much? Are we, do we have that sort of power slash, you know? Um, cause it, I'm concerned with going, hey, anybody, anybody that's on a board, you can join. That seems risky. I, I don't know if I want to be too large, but at the same time, don't want to exclude, uh, Ms. Lloyd?
I think that that would make the steering committee way too large, having all those, a member of the board on each one. I think that the steering committee, like I said, is kind of administrative and is going to be relatively small, and then each subject committee can be focused in on that subject and, and be the content, the major content creators. So it doesn't seem to me like at Bedford Day that there needs to be some real specific information, more just, we're gonna have, um, this, some, sometime in the next couple of months, we're gonna have a, a meeting where we'd love to have your, you attend and have your input, and we're gonna have a bunch of different committees for the content, and we'd love to have you be involved in each of those, or in whatever committee is interesting to you, we'll let you know. So it doesn't need to have super specific information at Bedford Day, just getting everybody like, starting to think about, oh, this is gonna be happening.
So, so I hear you with Bedford Day. I think we were, I think we're trying to maybe define how we want this to go, um, in general, and, and Catherine, please feel free to speak up in terms of, uh, you know, the steering committee could be smaller, and then, cause you were kind of mentioning subcommittees, and Catherine, I think, were you talking basically about sort of that, right? Or, or that's one way to organize it?
Um, no, I, I was suggesting having one overall committee so that you can deal with those trade-offs and synergies better than if you break into different groups of people for different topics. I've seen, I've seen Lincoln's process where they had subcommittees for different topics. Um, and they did a certain amount of work themselves as separate subcommittees, you know, with varying degrees of success, but they really didn't succeed in coming back together again. Um, so I, I wouldn't say that was a very successful approach. Um, in some ways, people can sort of entrench their positions more if they've got a particular, you know, direction that they're interested in and favoring.
So what are we paying for with the consultants? What are they, what are their responsibilities? And I probably should have read the RFP a little closer, um, in terms of sort of divvying things up here?
Well, they are usually the primary writer of the planned content. Um, and they may, depending on, you know, how many meetings and so on you've specified, they may lead some of the discussions um, that, that may be to be negotiated, that, you know, the exact balance of, of their work. Some of the discussions may be led by the planning board, um, either it's regular meetings or special sessions. Um, so it, it's a part to be worked out with the consultant, I think, unless, you know, Tony's got any further ideas about what, which way the RFP is going.
Yeah, so the, the consultant is generally the, the team that elicits the feedback from the public through whatever series of, of meetings and forums and questionnaires. And in this day and age, whatever other mechanisms can be used to get input from residents, business residents and other, um, stakeholders involved in Bedford. And then the, um, they take the feedback and try to translate that into words to address the topics that are comprehensive plan studies. And so they are both the, you know, kind of the cheerleader to get people to speak up or provide input, and then uh, the group that helps you take the feedback and turn them into goals and recommendations. So that's the purpose of the consultants.
Okay. Um, Amy, I think, oh, actually, sorry, Mr. Hagan, apologize.
Yeah, thank you. This is helping clarify things, Tony and Catherine. Um, if they're the primary, um, first group or people who put on paper, then is, if that's really the case, and I, without picking a number, I'm suggesting, do we want to think that the steering committee is, it's the planning board plus, uh, perhaps one person for each of the major areas, which would mean, um, maybe it's a dozen people or a little more, but, but that is in that range, it's not 30. You know, it's not a widespread organization. The steering is much shaller. And then when you pick up, as is being described, the subcommittees or the content-focused groups, then it's as large as, uh, well, I, I'll ask about past experience in other towns. I would not expect more than 10 people per each focus area. Uh, correct me if that's wrong. There's people that are very focused on certain areas, like transportation. There are specific groups of town for this. The same thing with, uh, other things on trails and on, uh, commercial, uh, areas. So I'm asking the rest of the board informally, are we talking for, uh, a dozen or a little more for the steering committee? That'd be one way to say, okay, now we know the level that is focused, and everything else is, uh, the larger, uh, subcommittee range. I'm putting that out for a discussion to try to understand what we, the board, mean by steering committee. Thank you.
So if, if I can maybe give you a little guidance to sure, to help react to that, uh, cause I've, in my past, I've had steering committees of 26 and others that are less than 10, and, you know, 26 is both unwieldy and over the course of two years or you know, keeping everybody involved in every topic. It's a little difficult sometimes, especially when, um, you know, if you're working on the transportation element, not everybody involved in open space and, you know, you have an open space and recreation element. Not everybody who's a big advocate of open space wants to be involved in the discussion of transportation and circulation recommendations. So typically though, you, you might think about, you would typically have a select board member as part of a steering committee because they're on the board that makes most of the policies in town. You might want somebody from the finance committee because the comprehensive plan is gonna make recommendations about spending money in the future. When you get, you know, now going beyond that, you know, you, yes, there are pieces of this puzzle where you're gonna want conservation or recreation commission members, but not necessarily every element. The historic district commission will want to be involved in certain elements, but maybe not others. And so, um, and when I, it's, when I look at the last plan and look at the advisory committee, it does seem like there's, um, you know, the recreation director's there, BARK is there, but I'm not sure that, it names the people, and I associate them with committees, and I'm not sure the committee was represented versus these were, these were residents who happened to be on committees, who also happened to be on the steering committee, because there's BARK, there's BAC. Uh, finance committee's there, but there's, um, you know, there's also a local real estate agent, there's, um, well, and there's a handful of people. I don't know what their connection is, so, um, and so, um, in order to, you know, in order to keep a steering committee or whatever you want to call it, uh, to a smaller number of people, it would, I think, I think we'd be looking at, you know, which groups have town-wide impact versus which groups have narrow focus interest, so.
Thank you, Tony. Um, just getting, you had your hand up, but then?
I'm, I did, but I'm, my, my thought, uh, prior to Tony's comment was that we seem to be headed in the direction of a steering committee on the order of a dozen or so, if I remember our uh, prior discussion correctly, and then I'm looking at the, the notes for, uh, today's meeting. I'm, I, I think Tony's comment about, you know, 26 being unwieldy, I would agree with that. I'm, there's just a human scale, you know, beyond which things don't really work well. I'm, and I, I feel like, you know, two dozen is well into that, you know, doesn't work well because it's, you know, too many, too many people to, uh, coordinate. I'm, I'll stop there. Yeah, about a dozen seems reasonable to me.
Okay. I mean, I'm not sure what we need to decide today. Um, I think, I feel like unless somebody objects, go ahead, Ms. Lloyd, your suggestion was good.
Um, I was going to say, you know, we're discussing committees now, but another piece that we haven't decided upon is what are each of the sections, and what are they going to, what is required is from state law is one thing. Are we going to simply comply with that, or are we going to choose other things? So I don't know that we want to have a long discussion, certainly about that, but is there something that's not in the state requirements that is missing that we feel like needs to be in there? I would certainly, I would certainly say that the natural and cultural resources and the open space and recreation need to be split into natural and open space and cultural resources and recreation instead. It's the odd things together, in my opinion, but other than that.
It's been a topic area, um, in other comprehensive.
What is?
Climate change. It's been a subject area in some other comprehensive plans, I understand.
So I, I feel like these things would want to be decided by a steering committee.
Yeah, and we did invite, um, you know, proposers to, to, um, weigh in on that too, if I recall correctly.
Hmm, yeah. Yeah, so we didn't call it climate change, but we, we talked about resilience and sustainability being worked into the plan, so. Um, so. And then, yes, but, and then those, you know, the, the elements as specified in the statute, the, you know, the fact that you want to invert how, you know, the state for whatever reason over history does open space and recreation is one thing, and it did lump natural and cultural resources. There's no reason why those can't be, um, aligned differently so long as they're addressed in the plan.
Right. Um, so I feel like for Bedford Day at least, I think, I don't know if it's gonna be a few poster boards or something, but in terms of comprehensive plan, it'd be, you know, we're gonna be searching for a steering committee very soon. Um, and then looking for focus group leaders, you know, after that. Um, I don't know, is that good enough for Bedford Day, or, uh, Mr. Hagan?
Uh, yes, I agree with all of that for Bedford Day. I have a question for Tony. Um, when we're all done with this, does the state have to approve it? I'm, we're answering to the residents of Bedford, but does the state have to say, yeah, that's a good comprehensive plan, and they can, or can they say, no, go do some more stuff? Yeah, who, who approves this besides the residents of the town?
Well, so no, there's no state oversight. And you, as a board, are the entity that the state law says shall adopt a plan.
Yeah, we only have to supply a copy to the state. That's all it says in the statute, um, apart from listing the topics.
Yeah, but right, otherwise, other, other than filing a copy with what is now E O H L C, there's no other. Um, but they, they just keep a copy. They don't, they don't.
This is not like bylaws or zoning changes or anything like that.
Yeah, unlike zoning, which has to get through the attorney general, uh, this does not have such a review. Uh, but in order to make it, in order to, yeah, in order to get broader buy-in, once you have the plan, most, most planning boards do at least make a presentation to town meeting to say, here's what we did. Here's what we recommend, and we hope you agree, and then, you know, the terminology of, are you asking for them to adopt the plan versus accept the plan? Um, the nuances of that can be worked out somewhere down the road, but the, you know, the, the goal is to, to have town meeting acknowledge that a plan's been completed and it, it makes recommend, again, it makes recommendations for changes to bylaws and for spending money. And, um, even if, you know, and the point is, even if you don't agree with every, every individual recommendation, cause I'm not sure, I'm not sure even the preparers of the plan are gonna agree with every, every individual recommendation, but, uh, the, in the end, it's like, the majority of, of participants came up with this plan, and we're asking for you to acknowledge that it's there. So, um, but that's, that's kind of the end of it. And to, I mean, that, other than actually now working on the recommendations after you're done, but there's no, uh, town, you know, effectively, select board, town meeting are not required to accept it or adopt it, but, um, but we are intending to ask them.
Uh, Ms. Lloyd?
Um, basic, I was gonna say, I agree with you for town meeting, and, um, in terms of the, um, steering committee, that I think that both Catherine and Tony have made some very, very good points. Um, and I certainly think that Tony makes sense without having a giant committee. Um, and that each person on the committee needs to be looking at the town as a whole. And in a way, Catherine's the same thing in that that steering committee, she was saying, made the, more of the decisions, but each of those, that committee looked at the whole town proper rather than each individual doing its own, doing their own thing. So I wonder if we could have a steering committee that would have, be more than just administrative and have sort of oversight, but then have some specific committees separate that the steering committee would attend, or some people in the steering committee would attend and take notes from, and get more information because there are people that are gonna be much more interested in open space or in traffic circulation or something like that. Yeah, so just my thought.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. Um, I don't know if people have specific thoughts about Bedford Day. Um, I like, uh, I like the comprehensive plan required elements. I think having a poster board of that would be great, so a, a talking point. Um, a talking point for the planned, uh, zoning bylaw changes, which we'll discuss in a little bit in terms of what those will be. Um, and then, Mr. Kittens?
Yeah, I, I've put together a couple of charts for, uh, the town meeting presentation, uh, for the consultant funding. I am so, yeah, I'll send those, and if you don't have a copy, I need, welcome to pull any graphics off of that. I don't remember that there was much, but if there's anything useful.
Yeah, I don't think we need too much, and I kind of agree with Ms. Lloyd. I don't know if we need a handout.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think that makes sense to just have it on a, on a board.
Or that we can discuss, talk to, point out, and then discuss with people.
That makes sense.
Uh, does that sound good to everyone?
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could ask.
Please.
Uh, for the board to stay on the zoning bylaw amendment themes?
To discuss that right now?
Kind of discuss that piece now, because we have an attendee who has interest in, um, or has an issue that in order to potentially address it, it might involve needing to amend the zoning bylaw in the town, at least in the town center business district, so.
Well, sure, can we take that one last or?
And, um, well, I would, um, I would like to take that out of order so we can have him say his piece and then move on with the rest of our agenda. And, um, but also then to also confirm what to do, uh, if you want to, um, also get back to the 600 square foot.
Yeah.
Threshold on the Z B A, not conforming lots question.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss all of them.
Yeah, and then, and then I would alert you to a probable, we understand there's going to be a citizen petition on another matter, so.
Yeah, I, I could use help with what the citizen petition means for us. And is that meaning that they're petitioning for a change in the zoning bylaw or what is that petition?
Um, that's what I'm told. I haven't seen, I still haven't seen the petition.
Sure.
Town manager's office informed me yesterday that, um, that it is a zoning petition.
Okay, um, that's, from my understanding, that's not required to come in front of the planning board first, correct? I thought anyone could propose a zoning bylaw change in front of town meeting.
But town meeting can't discuss it unless you've made a recommendation.
They submit it to the select board, the select board refers it to the planning board for a public hearing. And then the planning board makes a recommendation.
Yeah, but we get a little overview of what, what we might expect.
So on the citizen petition, it is, um, a neighborhood complaint about somebody who has what the neighborhood feels is too many vehicles on their property. And, um, so I'm, I'm expecting the petition will be something about having, trying to prevent people from parking cars on their grass.
So it's residents.
Isn't there already, um, a requirement in the general bylaws for how many cars are permitted to be parked on the property?
No, we have, we have, we have bylaws that interest the, that limit you to one unregistered vehicle per property and one commercial vehicle unless you get a special permit from the Z B A. But I'm, I'm not aware really of anywhere that prohibits the number of registered vehicles you can own. You know, bear in mind, there are car collectors who collect cars and.
I wasn't aware of that. I thought there was a, some kind of, some limit. I don't, but I don't know.
No, I mean, well, I mean, that's, that, that'll, if this thing goes to town meeting, that'll be part of the discussion of why would you limit somebody's ability to own? You know, why would you limit how many vehicles somebody can own if they're registered and operated?
Do you know how many cars that they're, um, going to propose and do you know what neighborhood it, um, currently they're talking about? Just out of curiosity.
So, yeah, so as I say, I haven't, I have yet to see this. I have yet to see the petition, so I don't know details.
Okay.
So my, my curiosity has peaked and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, me too. Me too. Um. Okay, so I guess we can hear the other, uh, Great Road discussion.
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna bring in Jack Beland, who owns three, he owns three properties in the town center. Three, three properties altogether at Great Road.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we go off.
Hold on, Tony, one second.
Can you find out who's gonna be at town meeting before we leave that subject? I, I'm supposed to be someplace else. So who's gonna actually be there? Thank you.
For town meeting or Bedford Day?
Bedford Day.
Oh, uh, I'll be here. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for staying. Yes, it seems like three of us will be here from the board. Tony, you'll be here?
Um, yeah, I'll be there.
Okay. Okay, sorry, uh, so.
Yeah, so for those of you who remember, um, the property where Oscar De Priest had his dentist office, which became, later became Great Metals Dental Group, uh, the owner of the property. So this is 56 Great Road. It's one, it's one lot over from the, it's one lot north or west from Fletcher Street. It's a two-story 1850s era, um, building that's had a dentist office on the first floor for a number of years and residential use upstairs, I believe, and, um, you'll hear that the owner is having difficulty renting the commercial space and is interested in finding out if the board would be supportive of changing the rules so that in, in some scenarios that those spaces could be uh, put back to residential use.
Okay, thank you. Um.
And so Jack, if you're there, we can, um, yeah, I think he's gonna come up as a panelist.
Yeah, yeah, he's a panelist now. But he's still on mute and his video is off.
Uh, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Can you see me? I don't know if you can see me, that doesn't matter, but yeah, so I own 56 Great Road, I own 4852 Great Road and I own 4244 Great Road. And it's been a dentist office since like 1913. Um, I brought the, I bought the property from Oscar and, you know, the current tenant, um, just to, you know, the climate out there, uh, decided to close the practice and, uh, it's been on the market for about seven months with, um, basically no activity and, um, you know, I'm looking to, you know, just change that, you know, to a, you know, residential apartment, which, you know, will, you know, obviously, you know, rent, you know, relatively a lot quicker than, you know, seven months sitting on the market at a reasonable, reasonable rental price in bed fit. And, you know, just looking to change it so, you know, I could put a family in there or, you know, uh, whoever best, you know, you know, looking to rent something in that area and, um, you know, I just, you know, I just can't sit out there vacant, you know, another seven months, um, just waiting for some commercial tenant to come along because in seven months with, you know, some of the best real estate agents in town, you know, they've, they're really coming up empty and there's really no interest in renting the spaces commercial. So, um, but with that said, um, with the three properties, um, I'd like one of them, 4244 Great Road, kind of sits outside the district. And where I own all three, if we're gonna move to maybe make an exception here to change that, I'd like kind of like all three kind of zoned alike, if that's a possibility as well. Just for whatever reason, when they did the, uh, Great Road restructure there, the consultant, I believe, kept 4244 outside the Great Road District, I believe, as far as the zoning goes.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bell. Uh, Mr. Gettens?
I think that sounds very reasonable. Well, what, um.
What are, what is the exact restrictions right now and what powers do we have to make this sort of change? Um, Tony, I don't know if you could clarify any of that?
Yeah, so the, um, yeah, as, as, as Mr. Berlin notes, the three properties, uh, were always in two different districts, so that, uh, um, 56 Great Road plus the building next door, which is 48 through, um, 48 to 52. So think about if you know the building that has had, fetch it. And two others, there's three retail spaces in the front, behind which is, and there's a historic house behind it, attached to it, uh, that has three residential units in it. Those two properties used to be in the limited business district, the limited business delineation did not line up with the property lines. And then there's a three-family property, um, that he also owns that is, that was primarily residence B. And when we changed limited business to Great Road Business, we also aligned the districts with the property line. And so the three-family house stayed residential, the other two properties were absorbed in the, in the new business designation. And so, um, so that question of, you know, whether or not the third property, you know, um, should, you know, could the boundary be expanded to absorb that, that three-family house? Um, I think we had some preliminary discussion a couple of years ago, but didn't go anywhere with it. The, uh, but in the meantime, whether it was under limited business or under the new, well, back up, so under limited business, a single-family house was allowed use, but uh, multifamily was not. When we created the new Great Road Districts, we took, we also took, we took away the single family, but opened the door to multifamily. But the requirement for the multifamily was that the, there had to be a commercial street face on the ground floor. And that applied across all four of the business districts along the Great Road, so. Um, there, this, I think, there were other property owners in the town center district specifically, so that's, we're talking about from Hillside up the hill to, um, you know, through these properties in the fire station across the street. Uh, there are other landlords who similarly have had issues, um, keeping or finding commercial tenants in there, you know, most of these buildings are old, um, and, um, and so other, other properties have questioned also whether or not, um, we wouldn't, at some point, consider easing the ability for those buildings to just be residential rather than requiring mixed use in, in each of those buildings, or at least in the buildings that are facing this up on the street, so. Um, and so that's the question, and if you're, you know, and, and you're hearing an example of somebody who's had, had the space on the market for seven months now and, um, and is, uh, you know, losing money by not, not having an income stream from it. And so the question of, uh, and because we didn't put this neighborhood in the M B T A district, it, it, it doesn't, it's not eligible under that scenario either, so. Um, so the, and, and so I would suggest if the board is willing to look at this, that it be limited to just this one sub-district of the town center, not applicable to to the Shawshin Sub-District or the Marketplace District or the North Road Sub-District, but just literally for these historic buildings, because we're also mostly overlapping the historic district. Um, and therefore, you know, creating, you know, the shiny new retail that the marketplace was able to do some years ago, you really can't do that in town center. So in the center district, um, the question is, are you willing to try to entertain modifying those rules for the buildings in this district to, to be used for just residential purposes, or do you want to, if you hold to the mixed use, uh, which is currently required, um, and or, and if you're, if, uh, and are you willing to, if you're willing to to pursue this, are you willing to add it to the mix for November? Because the, we have until Monday to finalize the articles to bring to town meeting this year.
I need to see a map of what you're talking about in terms of how large of an area this is.
Yeah, I've just, I've just pulled up a map on my screen. I can screen share if that would be useful.
That'd be great. I think I'm looking at the.
Yeah, I just, I pulled up the zoning map.
Hang on.
Uh, this seems to me to be a very reasonable, um, request.
Yeah, all right. Of course, you should be able to do it, otherwise I can also bring up the G I S map, but.
Your screen, okay. There, folks see that?
Yep.
All right.
Chris, are you able to pull up the G I S map? It actually shows the individual lots. It's, it's quite helpful.
I can do that too. Um, can you still?
No, can't do both.
That's, that's.
But Tony, can you describe?
I can pull up, uh, pull it up on another screen and then switch.
Are you just talking G R slash M, Tony?
No, we're talking about the G R C on the left of it.
Sure, yeah.
The property finder has a zoning layer.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have it queued up if you want to see it or.
Yeah, let me, I'll stop sharing.
I mean, my, my, my initial thing is what's gonna stop other owners in the other areas to go, well, what about my area?
Yeah, so, um, what you see blown up is the inner, is Fletcher at Great Road.
Yep.
And, um, 56 is the, 56 is this property here, so it's right next to 60 Great Road where earlier we approved the two-family, uh, in the back, it happens up front on Fletcher, but.
Right.
Um, so it's the property immediately next to that. And then if I.
That doesn't, that two-family doesn't have a business that we just approved.
No, so the business, no, so it was, we, that, we treat that property as the, so there's a, there's an office building on the front edge of Great Road and there's now, there's a residential building behind it.
Yeah, just clarifying, yep.
Yep, right, and so, um.
And thi- this is in the middle of a residential area, so it strikes me that it's, it's very reasonable to.
Well, so is G R M.
Yeah. Eh, yeah, lots of.
I mean, all green. It's surrounded by green.
Yeah, so, but anyway, so ignore the fact that the town campus I have highlighted here, but, uh, everything in gray in the middle, so we're going literally from Hillside and Bacon northwesterly along Great Road through everything that's gray or brown, depend, I guess, depends on your, how your screen displays it. So these are the affected properties. So there's a handful heading down South Road. Uh, but they're, they're mostly properties on Great Road. As I say, from Hillside coming up the hill to the, um, to the, up to the fire station.
I would be shocked if people in G R M didn't go, uh.
Yeah, so not G R M, so right, so the market, you know, the Bedford Marketplace and the handful of other commercial property, the banks across the street down through C V S and the former auto parts store are not, I'm not proposing changes there, so it's literally, um, um.
Oh, wait.
Literally these buildings to the west of Bacon and Hillside.
I'm sorry, I'm now confused. G R C is bigger than I thought. I apologize. I didn't understand it. It actually goes down the hill of Great Road from what you just said. So it is a much larger area, sorry. The previous map made it seem like that was G R M, um, to the right of South Road.
I'm sorry, I was kind of focused on just the, the properties under discussion.
But you can't do that, right?
Well, yeah, so, um, the center district is somewhere around 30 properties.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that. I think that.
Right, Chris?
I think that the GRM properties.
Yeah.
And the GRC properties are not, there may be people who will complain, but. I don't think that there's any similarity between.
No, sorry.
Much more commercial.
Ms. Lloyd, I was confused.
Yeah.
And, but I also wanted to say that. That center district that is very historical, has quite a few historical, um, buildings, it seems reasonable to me because. Over the years, they've been residential and commercial back and forth for forever.
Yeah.
And so allowing them to be one, the other mix. Is, seems reasonably fine, right now many are simply residential.
I, I am in violent agreement with that statement.
Mr. Hagan, any thoughts?
No. I mean. I, I, I mean, I'm in agreement with this, I just don't, didn't need to discuss it.
Well.
Can, can I also add that, um, forty-four, forty-two being added to the district, I need to give some thought to.
Why, why would we, why would we need to add it? It's purely residential, right?
That is one thing that, well, that's true, that's, I believe one thing that the owner is asking.
To me, that's off the table for this November.
I'm not thinking, I need to think about it.
Yeah, to me, that's off the table for November. To me, right now, we're just discussing a potential for November town meeting for GRC, allowing it to be pure multifamily residential. Do you, do you agree? That's what I was discussing right now.
I think that's a reasonable approach.
Um, for now, we can have further discussion in the future.
Um, it just feels like we got a pretty tight timeline between now and town meeting, so. The more that we try to bite off, the more challenging it would be to. Try and, and get there.
Um, Mr. Bellin, did you have a, a statement?
Yeah, I will say with forty-two, forty-four and, and being, you know, thrown in the district where, you know, I own all three properties makes perfect sense. And I will say, you know, like across the street from me, um, they just put like an elderly care in, so they went from residential to commercial. So.
Do you mean forty-three, to clarify?
Forty, yeah, forty-three, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, they just went from residential, you know, to a commercial, you know, first floor space. And, you know, where forty-two, forty-four sits across the street. I mean, it probably makes perfect sense, like Amy said, to kinda, you know, with a center district historical. You know, it's, you know, over the years, it's been, you know what I mean, like. Residential, commercial, and, and right now the current climate for commercial spaces in an eighteen-hundreds house, just, you know, yep.
So I totally hear what you're saying, I feel like that is something we could discuss, but I need then to look at more properties. And not just these, to decide, and if I'm gonna do that, it's not gonna be for November.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, I, I mean, I'm going nowhere, so even, you know, in the spring meeting or down the road, it'd be nice to kinda have them all the same, you know?
Oh, good to know. Good to know, thank you, Ms. Lloyd?
Um, I just wanted to say, um, clarify that, um, for forty, uh, three, I believe it is Great Road across the street. Um, the Historic District Commission has actually, like, they put in some parking, and the Historic District Commission actually, um. Basically negative set, negatively said, we, wait, we didn't approve that. And had required them to take it out, so I don't know where it stands right now, but, um. It is not considered a commercial space, and they've done some stuff that they weren't allowed to do, and this, this HTC is. Stepping on them to do that, saying, no, you can't do that. Just FYI.
Thank you for the clarification, um. So. Seems to me, we have two members strongly in favor of. Allowing, I don't exactly the words, but, uh, not require, I guess it's eliminating the requirement for, um. A commercial piece to GRC? Is that statement correct, Tony and everyone?
Yeah, or it would be to simply allow. Um. Residential and multifamily residential as a standalone use in this.
Any combination, any combination that the owner would want.
Could we allow single-family then? Cause right now it's not allowed from what you said earlier, Tony.
At the moment it is, the way we wrote. The Great Road Districts is, is single-family's not allowed.
Oh, but that's because of the, you could have one unit and then a commercial piece, right?
Yeah.
So I am in favor of saying GRC. Can be multifamily or that, I don't know, but like, um, not allowing just single-family, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, the, right, there were some examples where there's a, you know, there's a commercial use and there's a, and there's one residential unit.
Right.
Um, I. There may still be one, one existing single-family farther down. Great Road.
I mean, am I being silly in terms of. Trying to make sure they don't tear this down and put one large single-family house, but I guess there's a historic commission and everything. And I don't know, cause Mr. Gettens, I can see that you're hemming and hawing.
Well, I, you know, I, I think, uh. I think allowing residential use in this area, uh, is entirely appropriate. I'm. Yeah, i- if you were to do so, I, I mean, think immediately of like the Leonard's Music Building, right, that, that could conceivably be a home as well as a business. I'm. I. I. I would prefer that we, we just find a way to allow residential uses, I wouldn't. I jump on trying to exclude. Single-family as a use, I'm. Yeah, I, I would more favor just opening it up to, uh. To allow residential as well as commercial. Either or or mixed.
Uh, Ms. Lloyd?
I do like the idea of still requiring, um, or, or requiring a multifamily, because I think that. If I'm looking correctly, that's the only building that really could, would be tiny, tiny little units if it were split. Um, you're right, Tony, there is, I believe that next to that is, or just down from that is a single, one single family. But none of the rest of them are single families, so I don't know. If we, if that can just be grandfathered, but the notion of multifamily, allowing. People to live in apartments, people who are, say divorced and have their kids just a couple days a week. You know, need to live in a smaller space. It would be greater to have those in town. Rather than a giant single family.
Yeah, and I think, uh, or, what if. You could do this as a means to. You could set this up so it's a means to preserve existing historic structures. And, and kinda not allow. A new. Mansion to be built. In its place, so it could be that, that the. Residential-only option only applies. To, uh, if preserving or renovating an existing. Structure rather than. New, than allowing new construction.
Uh, Mr. Gettens?
So it, it seems like to me that we've got, um. Majority, if not unanimity in moving forward with something. Some modification proposed to. Uh. Great Road Center, I am, but we still need to sort out the details. So with respect to the Monday deadline, we can put a placeholder in that yet we're, we're game to undertake. Uh, proposing changes to, uh, to GRC. But the particulars of that, uh, we still need to work out.
It would have to be clear enough to advertise.
So. Uh, is it?
I mean.
Say that we were considering, um.
We're gonna allow residential.
Allow, yeah, residential only, commercial only, or a mix?
Right.
Can we do that and then clarify at our next meeting, or is that too late?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, is that too vague?
Right.
Well, I think, um, I think we can figure out how to advertise it, and the, the point would be to. Adver- if we advertise it. More restrictively and through, through the public hearing, it becomes more. Right, you know. We don't wanna make it.
And you've gone outside your topic.
Yeah, um. I think, um.
Possibly consider allowing both single-family and multifamily.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a way to write it, so the options are all there. And then, uh.
If there's time, I'm willing to do this.
Yeah.
Just trying to watch your workload as well, Tony and Catherine, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been tight just getting the, uh, the existing list drafted.
Right, right. So. I, uh, Mr. Gettens, I don't know if you have a thought, but if there's something that can be written up that makes sense, I'm fine with going forward with it, I know, I think there's three of us that are interested in this. Uh, for sure, um, potentially four, um. But if it, if it just.
I'm interested also, go ahead.
Alright, thank you for staying, um, if there isn't time, to me, unfortunately, it goes under the ones that we're about to discuss. Mr. Bellin, do you have, uh, one more?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, I've, you know, I've been in this town a long time and I really support this town, and I've watched this town and the committees kinda jump and bend over backwards for a lot of these bigger. Biotech companies and, you know, pharmaceutical companies and give them all kinds of breaks. It, it'd be nice, I really don't, you know, go to a lot of these meetings and that sort of stuff if, you know, some, and somewhere the town could find some time to, you know, help the small guys in this town that kinda stand up and. Do whatever we can for this town to, to create some space so the, you know, something like this can be seen, um, and, you know, not, you know, keep another five or eight months. You know, kinda vacant out there and, you know, believe me, the last thing I wanna do is go, you know, build out an apartment in there, that's for sure, you know what I mean, like, that's just a, a loss in itself, you know, uh, so. You know, with that said, it'd be nice if, I appreciate you guys tonight taking me in and, uh, that sort of thing, it'd be nice if we could just, you know, do something out there anyway to help, uh, you know, the small businesses for sure.
No, thank you, sir. Um, yeah, we appreciate that, and we'd like to get this done, um. Just time is very tight at this point for, for November, but. I think Tony's willing to try.
Yeah, I think we can, we can, we can do it.
Ms. Lloyd?
I was going to say, you know, we could, um. Write it such that while it doesn't require multifamily, it does, as Tony talked about. Or less require not tearing down, this, it is in the historic district, but that it. Keeps the historic, renovates the historic buildings, and then allows that owner to renovate it however they seem fit, however it is fit. And so it may be renovated as a single family, but that's unlikely.
Uh, I'm fine with that.
Just don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, my main goal was to not see him torn down, so I'm fine with that.
Right, I.
If it makes sense. Okay.
Does that make sense to you, Chris?
Yeah, it sounds okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you, um, so now we have the original ones that we proposed, um. I think, I'd like to go with these very quickly, I think. Number one, the MBTA community zoning cleanup, I think that's, has to be done, correct? Tony?
Yeah, we would like to, um, we'd like to get that.
Right.
Done, and then we can submit for EOHLC approval.
So that's, I think that's done, um.
We've got, we've got drafts now, I don't know whether Tony wanted to put them up on the screen. You've not sent them out, have you, Tony? Cause I.
No, but I.
They were written after the.
Queued up if you wanna read them, but the. There's, the MBTA one is, is literally kinda formatting and structure within the use table.
Uh, slightly more than that, actually.
Would the board like to see them? Let's throw it up.
Yes, please, I would like to see them.
Sure.
So. For the purposes, so for the MBTA one, we. Because there were some technical. Pieces in the printing of the warrant last spring. We just needed to have. We needed Table One to appear. In the print to make it clear that we were amending Table One. And that, that got dropped in the printing of the warrant last spring. What we also propose to do to clarify the differences between the terms multiple dwellings and multifamily housing. Um, for those of you, well, I'm not sure who is here, but. The, the line item in four-two-eleven. Multiple dwellings is a reference to the Residence D District that was created some years ago and has its own chapter in the current zoning by law. Where. Uh, literally a special set of regulations were written that yielded what is now Kendall Court. It allows multiple dwellings on a lot. But it, it is not. As written, it isn't directly multi, doesn't require necessarily multifamily housing, and so. As we create the new. Section four-point-two-point-twelve for multifamily housing. In the MBTA overlay, in the, excuse me, in the multifamily overlay district. We just wanna add a reference in the table under four-to-eleven that that. Line item refers specifically to Residence D District. So that it's clear that, uh. Uh, that there's, uh. You know, that these are two different things. So. Uh, and then this would also change therefore the title of what is section sixteen in the bylaw, so that. The title, which is currently multiple dwellings on a lot. Gets added to, to say that it, it's in Residence D. Um, because of, simply because of the way it was originally written and will. We're still struggling with how that's gonna change in the new proposed format, but for the time being.
Well, Judas, Judas, this is the wording that Judy has got in her draft for the new bylaws, she's adding in Residence D, so this will be consistent with that.
Okay. Ms. Lloyd?
Um, two comments, one is this seems pretty straightforward and pretty minor, relatively speaking, so I don't have a, a problem with it at all, um. But the second one is a question, uh, I have for Tony, and that is, limited business is still in this chart, and if the, um. The article that we're going to talk about later with Zwickers being rezoned to Great Road North District. Eliminating limited business, which we would like to do, um, would that be simply taken out for the vote? How, how would the vote on this work?
Uh, the way I've written the change for the Zwickers property is it wouldn't completely remove the limited business district, it would just change the zoning of that parcel. So there wouldn't be, so there wouldn't be any parcels stray on the zoning map that were limited business anymore, but the district would, in theory, still exist. So we would just leave all that in for now, and then that could be cleaned up in the spring, that seemed to be the, the simplest way to. To do it, otherwise, otherwise, there's a lot of, a lot of cleanup, including changing, yeah, and.
I see.
Several places.
That makes sense to me, for now.
Yeah, right, so this step simply changes the zoning map. To eliminate the last. Limited business. Zoning designation.
Sure.
Removing the terminology from, removing limited business from every citation in the bylaw.
Right.
Would now be done as part of the reorganization of the bylaw, so we're, we would recommend holding. Uh. Deletion of the terms. To be done as part of the reorganization rather than, uh, trying to fit all of that into this petition for a November town meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion on this? Can move on to number two? Okay. Okay, number two, uh, height change in industrial B and C districts to 80 feet or six stories. Detail on rooftop equipment may be wrapped in.
So this picks up in two places. One is we have the dimensional table, which is table two in the zoning bylaw, which is the one that identifies what are the minimum lot areas and setbacks and so on. And also specifies the heights in the various zoning districts. And so this proposal for industrial B and industrial C, which are entirely out in the Middlesex Turnpike and Crosby Drive corridor. So there is no, neither of these districts exists on the west side of Route three. They're all to the east of Route three. Um, and we would, and so the proposal is to increase the maximum height from 54 feet to 80 feet. And in, and so doing, and also capping them at six stories. But then also in the written description in section six point two point 10, uh, where there, there's text addressing the height. There is a provision that talks about chimney spires and other, what we would normally call mechanical projections above the rooftop. Uh, which the zoning bylaw currently gives an eight foot allowance for, um, in today's world, it's primarily HVAC equipment that's put up on the roof, although, um, some types of structures also have, uh, elevator penthouses and other, there's just, or if you have solar panels or clock towers or, um, there's just other features that, that sometimes are put up on the roof. And what we are finding is that the eight foot allowance that is in the current bylaw is um, not always is frequently not enough to cover my, more modern equipment. We're showing 20. I'm not sure 20 is the number we're going to need to go to. We have seen 20 in some of the uh, biotech structures that are being built, but we may, you know, we may come back in the end and say 12, you know, maybe 12 feet's a sufficient number to cover the majority of scenarios. Uh, we're still looking at that number with the code enforcement director.
Ms. Lloyd?
Uh, yes, the, um, but one issue I have is that industrial B also exists on this side in one half of Wiggins Avenue and, and, um, Alfred Court.
I take back my statement if I'm incorrect.
I think that's in just, no, most of that's industrial. I hope it's not all.
I think it's listed as industrial B. The southern half is, and southwestern is industrial A and the Preston Court, Alfred Circle, Wiggins Ave area behind the mall is, um, shopping center is industrial B.
Yes, it is. I'm looking at that zoning map I had up earlier.
Mm-hmm, and I think that's going to be an issue for a lot of people.
Hmm.
Yeah, we would, it was not our intent to include this, um, well, yeah, Preston Court and Alfred Circle are not intended to be 80 foot height limits. So. So we would have to add that qualifier that it only applies to the properties east of Route three.
So we would be creating a fourth industrial zone then in practice.
Yeah, that makes it more complicated.
Yeah. Do we really need four?
We would have to have a map amendment as well.
Yeah, I don't know why when we originally decided that B was on both sides of Route three, but, uh. Uh, Mr. Hagan?
We could for the Fall Town meeting, just limit it to, uh, industrial C. And if, and if that passes, then the attitude, you know, let's just say the, um, existence of 80 feet and, and the higher et cetera would all be ready, be done and the town meeting is used to that. And then as we refine industrial B, we could come back in spring and, and get that sorted out. I mean, I'd book it. If we restricted it to just industrial C, the idea is to get through the 80 foot approval. And, and then we have a precedent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Ms. Lloyd?
You know, this is, um, slightly adjacent, but I had suggested in the past and it wasn't, and just people weren't interested in it. Um, in rezoning our industrial districts because the, um, airport Hanscom is zoned industrial, but we don't really have any, they can do what they want. We don't have any point in it. So to me, it seems like we would have to look carefully at the size of the lots, the frontage, et cetera, but there should be one zone for the airport that we just ignore and forget about. And then this side and then the other side. And then they would be, because every time we discuss the industrial districts, it's, there's an issue of, oh, it's on both sides, but we want that side to have one thing and this side to have another thing. And I think that's a, a problem. So, so my mind, this side should have one type of zoning and that side should have another type. And it doesn't necessarily need to be industrial, um, B and C over there. But we'd have to look into, again, like I said, the, the size of the frontage and the lots and stuff. But that would be my.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Mr. Gittens?
So two comments. One, yeah, I'd be on board with just addressing industrial C at Fall Town meeting. I'm, and yeah, to Amy's comment earlier, I, I think, yeah, taking another look at industrial zoning in general, I'm as it's not immediately obvious to me why one area has got a two acre minimum, the others got four, yeah, you've got 150 versus 125 foot frontage. I'm, I just, I'd like to understand why it's, uh, split out the, the way that it is and perhaps, um, we can, we can make it a bit simpler. But for now, yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to address industrial C only at Fall Town meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Um.
You know, that also might be good for commercial. Since COVID, things have really changed. So that might help to make this side allow a little bit smaller for startups. Cause there are more of those and not a lot of, as many commercial things starting as there used to be.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I tend to agree with all you. I think for, uh, for November, I'm, I'm keen to try and do industrial C. And then in the future to discuss trying to change industrial areas to make more sense with what is essentially what's happened in Bedford. Um, and discuss it more fully. Tony, are you amenable to just doing industrial C?
Yeah, that may make sense.
Okay. Um, in terms of 20 feet, uh, so that means you could have a hundred foot tall building. If you said like an elevator or something, that to me seems scary. And not what I thought was gonna happen. Um, I more like the sound of 12.
Yeah, or it may be, you know, in, at the end, you know, you may as a board in the end decide to leave it at eight feet. And for the, and in this case for the industrial C, if they can go to 80 feet, they are going to have to figure out how to live within the 80 feet plus eight feet of, uh.
Can they go? Yeah. So can they not go five stories, whatever, 60 feet? And then have, you know, 20 feet to play with for, is that not allowed?
They could do that now. Well, no.
No, but no, but I'm saying, so the, the total height of the building is going to be under 80. But.
Yes.
Uh, sorry, building and mechanicals. What I'm trying to figure out is can, with our bylaws, if we allow 80 feet, can they have mechanicals of 20 feet and a, and a height of a building of 60 feet?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I don't. I feel like they shouldn't need to go 80 plus.
Yeah, it may, right. And it may be that by giving them 80 feet.
Right.
We don't really need to increase the mechanical height because the extra height.
Right.
We'll kind of make that difference.
That's how.
The issue had been that living with the 56.
Right.
Plus it had been difficult for some of the buildings that are now.
I'm more keen on.
That have now been constructed.
And not changing the other. Um, Ms. Lloyd?
I just wanted to ask, um, what is the maximum height that the fire department is able to address? And does the mechanical equipment on top pertain to that? So if 20 was on top of 80, is that going to be an issue for fire wise?
We did have a discussion with them. Um, I'm not sure the equipment makes a difference. And in fact, they, um, for, for the life safety aspect, they would adopt what they call a stairwell approach, you know, where it's a protected, um, stairwell with the right pressure or something. So that people have more time to get out rather than, because they couldn't reach it with a ladder. So I don't think the rooftop equipment question makes a difference.
For safety. All right, thank you. Mr. Hagan?
Yeah, I did, I did talk to the fire chief. The 80 feet is to the roof line. You know, cause with the ladder, you can then get on the roof. And so, you know, if, if there's a fire in an elevator shaft, that's different. But his issue was, you know, can you get to the roof line? It's not how tall or, or is a pipe or something like that. So it, 80 still should be fine as far as, uh, the fire department goes independent of what the other structures are.
Yeah, they actually said that, you know, because the ladder is sloping, you don't get the full height of the, the ladder. And so I don't think they were talking about reaching that roof height with the ladder. Um, but they just said it's a different approach.
Any other thoughts of the board in terms of the eight versus 20 feet above height? People okay with 20?
That feels like something that we can, uh, discuss in detail during a hearing.
Okay. So, but Tony, it seems like you have to advertise it as 20 and then we can discuss it.
Well, it's advertised.
Okay.
As. Well.
That, that was why I put the 20 feet to, because it's easy to scale back than to.
The advertisement doesn't specify the number.
It says 20, it says 20 feet. Oh, oh, no, sorry. Not in the ad, in, in the draft.
Yeah, right. The ad only talks about potentially amending this number. It doesn't specify.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that then. Any more discussion on this or? Okay, so just to reiterate, it's for just industrial C for November. Uh, Ms. Lloyd?
Oh, I was going to say just what, agree with what you had said that 80 feet is the maximum height, whether you choose to have the roof line up to that without equipment on top or have the roof line lower and then some equipment up to 80 feet.
Sorry, that's, that's not.
I believe that, I believe, oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's what you were saying.
So, sorry, I, I was just trying to make sure, um, let's see, I'm fine with it being 80 feet and then they can have eight feet of, um, other stuff, but not 20 more feet of other stuff. However, I just want, I was trying to clarify that if they only made a building that was 60 feet, then they could go have more than eight feet of other stuff. Yeah.
I see.
But the roof height is 80 and they can still have eight feet of other stuff.
So I would say in my, to my mind, um, 80 feet is just the maximum actual height and you can choose.
So I feel like we're making, so that's why I was kind of surprised at this. I feel like we're making more changes. I literally thought industrial C is going to be 86. We actually don't have to change anything else. You're, what you're saying is we have to change other things. We have to get rid of the lines about projections and so forth. And I didn't want to do that. I wanted to just leave it at eight.
Yeah, based on, based on what I'm hearing, we're not. Your proposal probably is not going to change the height, except, you know, we're probably not going to allow these projections to go eight feet above the allowed height. We'll probably keep, I would phrase it, we're going to eliminate that second piece and just leave it as it is. Because as, as stated.
It wasn't my intent. I'll be honest.
Right, yeah, we did not. Yeah, I think if you leave it as, uh, as written, it won't be an issue. If, right. If you leave the text as currently exists.
Yep.
For the for the projections above the height. At eight, if you leave that at eight feet, that won't be an issue in, in most cases.
Correct.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Ms. Lloyd?
Well, you know how I felt about this in general, so I was just making suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so the, the draft is now 80 feet plus eight of projections?
Yes.
Okay, that's, uh, that's fine.
It's literally one number change. Fifty-six four changes to eighty slash six. It does associate and that's it. Okay, uh, moving on to rezones Wickers parcel at 379 North Road from limited business to Great Road North Road District.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Who, is it at all? Or it could have been a soundtrack, uh, let's see. Um, yeah, that there's no more limited business zoned or I guess it's not important.
Uh, this is, this really is based on everything we've ever looked at. This is the last, this is the last piece of property that carries the limited business designation.
Oh, no, it's good to know.
On the zoning bylaw reorganization, we can get rid of it if this passes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good. Uh, Ms. Lloyd?
Tony, are you planning on writing a letter to Mr. Zwicker?
Yeah, so, yeah, we're working on, uh, on, on working with this owner in advance of the hearing.
Great.
I don't want him to feel that we want to actually change his property somehow, because we don't. Thank you.
Just clean up. Okay, any further discussion or we can go on to deleting section 12 residential development rate limitation?
Yeah, well, yeah, so the, the warrant article is easily written. It just says delete this section, but the, um, this is a chapter of the zoning bylaw that was written in a manner that I think, um, didn't have the intent or didn't yield the outcome that may have been intended when it was written. And given that it has never been imposed or never been triggered. And given maybe some concern that under the MBTA multifamily requirements, is the state going to have heartburn if we leave this in the bylaw? We simply propose to delete it now so that the reorganization need not, uh, have to worry about where to place it.
It's also worth noting that it doesn't cover all types of development. Anyway, um, it, it doesn't apply to 40Bs. It didn't apply to industrial mixed use, which previously allowed residential use like at, at Village, which is Village, at Taylor Pond and Plank Street. Didn't apply to mixed use, didn't apply to Residence D. So, um, there's a lot of potential for multifamily housing before we get to MBTA community. there's a lot of potential for multifamily housing before we get to MBTA communities zoning. Um, so this is really something from the past. Um, and as Tony said, it's never been used. It, it really is obsolete, I think, at this point, as well as potentially disqualifying us from grants and so on. So it does seem time to delete it.
Um, Ms. Lloyd?
Tony and Catherine, do I recall correctly that, um, you had said in the past that you believe that, um, section twelve doesn't fully apply to state, the, the state laws aren't, it's not compliant with state laws? Is that correct?
Well, I mentioned that there's case law on, on moratorium and you know, it's arguable that this creates a moratorium because once you, you know, at a certain stage, this gets triggered and you, you can't, or you're limited to how, in how many units you can build. And case law has certainly developed in the way that you've got to be very cautious about using moratorium. You've got to have a clear reason, such as the need for certain infrastructure, that you've got to plan to provide by a certain timeline and so on, whereas this is really just for much vaguer reasons. So I, I think that at least suggests that it, it, it wouldn't be acceptable legally, um, that, that maybe other arguments.
The reason that I'm asking that is because going through all sorts of arguments about it seems to make it more complicated and make people more, um, thinking, oh, do we want to eliminate that? But simply giving a presentation that A, we've never used it and B, we don't believe that it applies to fully to, um, state laws is a little more straightforward and easier to, for everyone to understand than all the other stuff that in the past may and may not have been applied to it. That's secondary, in my opinion, too. It's not gonna be a go-to anyway, so let's not consider it as a possible thing to keep.
Right, but there's nothing written in the state statutes that says you can't apply a residential development rate limitation, although the law is always far more complicated and nuanced than that.
I see, I see.
But.
Well.
Case law has moved in the direction of saying though, that you can't have an unlimited length of time with a moratorium. And therefore, because this one is, this one is unlimited, you know, I don't think this would pass muster under review today. And we will see if I can get the AG's office to maybe even tell me so, uh, or, or give me an opinion of that, but.
I think that would be very useful for its presentation because I think there are some people who will want to keep it, um, because they don't want change. So all sorts of little details are going to make it more complicated and we need to make it very straightforward, quick and straightforward, in my opinion.
Yeah.
This is simple majority, correct?
Uh, this would be.
If it's residential, yeah, I would think so, right?
Uh, that's an interesting question as to whether or not this could qualify for simple majority versus two-thirds, because it's.
Yeah, I don't know. It's not straightforward, is it?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not the forms of zoning change that they've specified, so I'm, I'm not, I don't know. We'd have to look into that.
Interesting. Mr. Gettens?
I, I think if we can get an opinion from the AG's office, um, on whether or not it's, uh, it's legal. And if it's not legal, uh, if it wouldn't pass muster, then that should make quick work of it at, at town meeting. So.
What did town council say?
Well, we'll have their, we'll get their opinion too. Uh, uh, I think town council agrees that this is, um, uh, this is not, um, on, uh, this is not on, this is not a stable, you know, th- this is not really consistent with, uh, with the more recent, well, not consistent with the last twenty years of case law.
Makes sense. Did you have something else, Mr. Gettens? Okay. Okay, uh, I think we're fine with that. Makes sense. Uh, second to last one, formalized as a bylaw, the current ZBA building inspector policy protocol for changes to one and two family dwellings in non-conforming situations. Sounds like this is a little trickier than we thought, maybe?
No, that, that's the, this one.
Okay, sorry.
Um.
There were two that sounded similar, which caused a bit of confusion, but, um, this is the, um, the change that you wanted to the two-family dwelling bylaw that you wrote relatively recently, um, to address a case that came up at the ZBA, which is probably fairly unusual. It was a, a house that had been a two-family in the past and then had changed to a single family, so it didn't have the right to become a two-family again, um, depending on how we interpreted what, what the board had written. It was just a bit of an unusual thing. So writing that circumstance in seems to address that more clearly.
Uh, I'm fine with this one. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, it's easier when you have the, you know, the rest of the section is not here. So you, it's kind of, it's somewhat out of context if you don't see all of section four point two point two, but, uh, but it really.
I had a question in my mind as to whether we need to put out, put the whole
Yeah.
of the section four point two point two and for people to be able to read that. It just makes it rather long. So that's a question.
Yeah, because we explained the scenario in the previous subsection about here's what's allowed to be done by right. And we didn't clearly say that since, you know, for the situations that don't, that don't fit into this first situation, then you have to, here's how you have to go to the ZBA. And because we didn't specifically say that the conversion of a single family to two-family on non-conforming lots requires the ZBA permit, the ZBA with this prior case, um, uh, was briefly conf- just confused, I think, about how to deal with it. So, um, but it was clear in the prayer section that it, that the scenario wasn't allowed to be done by right, so that it needed the special permit. And, um, this would simply, this just makes it more obvious that, um, that that's what is intended.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gettens?
I, I think, uh, yeah, including, yeah, if not the whole section, I'm, yeah, more, uh, text to, to make it clear, you know, what the cha- what the proposed change is, makes sense. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be writing the italic explanations for each of the bylaw changes. But yeah, and, and this one, I think we've got to weigh up whether we put in a larger amount of text or try to explain in the italic explanation.
Okay, any further discussion or we're fine with this? Um, now the last one. Uh, formalized as a bylaw, the current ZBA building inspector policy slash protocol for changes to one and two family dwellings in non-conforming situations.
Actually.
Yeah, this is, this is the one. Now that, well, we don't, we don't have that because, um, that's the one that we didn't put in the legal ad.
Okay.
Um, we've got a copy of the, what the existing protocol says, if you want to take a look at that. Um, the main thing we were focusing on was that six hundred square foot allowance. But there are a few other little bits that are covered in it, so it makes it perhaps a little bit more complicated than we thought to incorporate in the bylaw. It might be better to leave it until spring, um.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't a problem with the zoning bylaw rewrite, correct? So, um, I am fine with pushing it off to the spring, especially if we're going to try and add in the other uh, Great Road C.
Right. Yeah, so basically the, the question comes really so that, um, if you see in the middle of the page where it says projects that require no review by the board and it has those three bullets, not just the one bullet that we, I think at the last we need, we're anticipating really only talking about the factors in that, um, in that first bullet where the, and this is a, this is the policy that additions less than six hundred square feet are, you know, uh, it's effectively the, the ZBA is ceding control of the small additions to the, uh, to the inspector of buildings. So that, um, and, and six hundred is the number that was simply picked as, as, uh, as additions of this size shall not be considered a, a, a substantial change to the non-conformity and therefore they can proceed directly to uh, building permit review. And, but, um, it also has the qualifying feature that it, that, um, the addition also has to meet the required setbacks. So, and then there's these, the two other features about decks are okay. Again, if they meet the setbacks. Or the other scenario is if you have somebody who wants to replace a non-conforming structure, but they're going to build on the same exact footprint and meet the same height, then that's also generally, and that's pretty common across the Commonwealth, that if you're simply going to build on the same footprint and not be any taller, then you just can get a building permit and you're not going to have a, a special permit public hearing. So, um, and so I guess the question we wanted to ask you as a board is, is, uh, whether you want this to proceed in November or hold it for hold it for spring. And it's really, it's, um, as I say, the policies, you know, builders have been following the policy and it's, it was simply, uh, because it's only being done as a policy, at some point, it should really be incorporated as part of the bylaw.
Ms. Lloyd?
I'm, uh, it sounds a little more complicated, especially because the ZBA needs to be very clear on what they, their decisions, then I'm fine with waiting on that and discussing it further. Having, because your, your time is already very short.
I mean, I, I think Great Road C is more important than this, at this junction in time. But, Mr. Hager?
Um, I would, I'd say move this to spring town meeting. And, and I wanted to say something else. Um, I have some, as you know, I have a farm. I get a couple animal issues I get to go take care of now. So I'll be signing off, but you still have a majority and we've covered the fall town meeting. And Thursday, uh, is the review of Carlisle Road. I'll buy the ZBA. I'll be attending the meeting because I need to for cons comment and other reasons. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Good luck. Uh, Mr. Gettens?
I, I was, I was, I'm going to say that I think we've got a pretty full plate for November at this point. Um, I'm inclined to, to push this to spring.
Okay. I think it's decided. Um, remove this from the fall and, uh, hopefully can get Great Road C in the fall. November, I should say. Okay, um, that was all of those. Um, okay, so we took things slightly out of order and that's okay. I think we're on update on the comprehensive plan preparation. Although we did hit that for a little bit, but.
Yeah, I think we covered that down, just, just to alert you that, um, so we're going to we, we are now recruiting and, um, and so beyond the steering committee question, it was simply a matter of, do you want to pull in uh, others to help review any proposals that come in, and that could include staff from the town manager's office. Um, anybody from the, members of the, a member of the select board, ZBA or finance committee.
So this is just for choosing a contractor, you mean?
This is for choosing a consultant, right?
Consultant.
Not, not necessarily for conducting the project. You know, or you can keep it to you as a, just within the board essentially, so.
Do you have a preference, Tony? I mean, I feel like.
Well, I would suggest we at least bring in the town manager's office, since they're the ones who end up signing the contract. And, um, and maybe, uh, and, and maybe ask if any of the select board members, ask for a select board member, but, um.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Lloyd?
I would agree with that, but I would not want to add anymore simply because we're the ones who are into it in detail and everybody else is sort of generic about the comprehensive plan. So I think it should be us. That's kind of my job.
Yeah. Mr. Gettens?
I'm going to second Amy's and Tony's comments.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys are on board with wording that, I don't know. Are, are we going to require a select board member or not? I feel like we shouldn't need to require it, but.
No, I, I would offer.
I would ask, yeah. Agree.
Okay.
Yeah, that, right. I might offer, they might say just go, you know.
Right.
They might just say, they might just tell you to run with your, you know, with your own impressions.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good. Town manager's office and reach out to select board if they want. Okay, anything more on the comprehensive plan preparation?
No, that's, that's all I had.
Okay. And it was good, I think it was a really good discussion tonight in terms of steering committee and everything that was I think we're coming down to a, a, a good conclusion. Uh, update on pending Carlisle Road comprehensive permit.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd hope to get you, um, some more detailed comments that get into some of the design and construction and operation issues, um, that would come out of similar as you would see as we, if, if we were making the decision on a project and had the interdepartmental review. Uh, and it, I just haven't been able to finish that. Um, I do not, um, I'd be stunned if the ZBA tried to close the hearing this week because I think there are too many, um, too many questions among various players and still, and, and just, um, and still just a lot of residents with questions that, um, um, but I think also one, you know, for, for the board, for the zoning board, um, I think there's still, I think we're still waiting for some peer review reports. And this, I believe, will be their first, uh, interaction with town council to help them with some legal questions that are out there. And so it'll be, um, you know, and, and they may have questions that town council needs more time to respond to. So, um, so we'll still get, we'll still get that together. Uh, I am not sure whether um, the zoning board or the town manager's office on behalf of the select board will try to again have more formal uh, interdepartmental review uh, of the proposal to try to help deal with, um, getting into the specific nuances of site construction and you know, where, um, you know, are we going to plant new street trees? Are we, you know, what are we doing about the sidewalk along the street frontage? Um, there's an area of ledge outcropping that's, uh, you know, so how are they going, you know, is that going to be uh, blasted versus, um, simply, you know, hammered, uh, out of the way. Um, and, and so, and, and there's still also, um, you know, engineering review of the storm drainage, which is on. You know, engineering review of the storm drainage, which is on conservation commission plate as well as ZBA. So. Um, so I think there's just, there's let alone also working with. Either our housing consultant or somebody about the details related to the lottery. And, and setting up all the mechanics of the affordable units here. So, um, so I think there's still. Um, still going to be time to literally talk through and, and, and. Get those features coordinated to the point of rendering a written decision of some sort.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, Ms. Lloyd.
Um, question and follow up, uh, the question, are we in, as a planning board intending to write another? Letter to the ZBA, um, about this project or no?
Well, that was, it was my intent to have the memo come from you as a board. To start, to try to help frame, uh, findings or conditions, uh, or at least have them. Uh, I, you know, identify topics that should be addressed in a, in a decision or topics to be used. In, in, whether it's positive or negative, but things that need, things they should, um. Be considering in the decision.
Um, I certainly agree with the topics that, that you're mentioning, but. One of my concerns, I've attended several meetings and some of the ZBA members. Have, I'm concerned about because there is quite a bit of misinformation that is out there. For instance. It is going to be built on wetlands and some of the ZBA members have literally pulled numbers out of thin air. Just created numbers that don't, aren't factual data. And I don't know how to, how that can be addressed, that they need to look. At factual data, they need to look at actual stuff, not just make up assumptions. Based on their own opinions. Is that something somehow we can address?
We, um.
I, I think the peer reviews address that to a large extent.
Yeah, well, well, I think, um, but we can, um. As I, we'll take a stab at that and we can, um. It, you know, if I can get you a memo far enough advance of the next meeting, you can then. You know, identify things to be added to the meeting, excuse me, to the memo if, if they're not there. Um, some of you have individually identified. Uh, issues and or relate questions you've received from residents because. Um, well, for example, member Hagan's getting questions from. Residents because they know he's also chair of the conservation commission and he's asked. You know, for input from staff, uh, on some of those questions and, and, and others of you have asked questions about. Census numbers and household size and school generation numbers and. Or other environmental impact questions. Um, and so we're, we're, um, we're trying to address the things we are. The things we're aware of anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gittens.
I'm just from my own education, uh, questions regarding. I, a number of students, uh, predicted to. Yeah, enter Bedford schools and household size. Um, those questions are out of bounds, correct? I incorporating, um, yeah, and it's legitimate for planning purposes, but in terms of, um. An up or down decision, I'm, yeah, if you factored in, I'm. Yeah, contributions to, uh, a number of students in the schools, that would be. Uh, housing discrimination if you were to, uh, consider that. It's adverse effect. Is that not correct?
In my opinion, you would have a hard time defending a denial if it's primarily based on. The predicted generation of schoolchildren. And likely would run afoul of the, as you note, we'll run afoul of the Fair Housing Act.
Thank you. Any further discussion or? Uh, update on the zoning bylaw reorganization.
Uh, we've, we've, we've been focusing mainly on the, um, the short term drafting of. These amendments that we're trying to get out of the way. Um, we did have a meeting with. Chris Lasky and, um, a few other staff members, um. Basically Matt Lewski from the assessors and also the public safety people were able to make it. Several other staff members weren't able to make it and, you know, it's, it's difficult to get everybody in the room at the same time. So. I think we'll probably have a separate discussion of things like the floodplain and wetland, uh, bylaws, which are. A bit more, a bit specialized, so it's, it, you know, it's tedious for, uh, people who aren't specialists to. Wade through some of these topics anyway. So I think separating that off might be helpful. Um, then I'll have to get back to Judy relaying, um, some of the staff comments and, um. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a lot to go through. You know, I went through. The footnotes that Judy had marked up, but a lot of them are probably technical rather than ones that. You want to answer as a board. So I think probably more, more interaction with Judy by, by us as staff is probably going to be helpful.
We appreciate that. Uh, comments from the board or, uh, go ahead, Ms. Lloyd.
Um, it was, are we ta, we're talking about residency or just zoning reorganization?
Residency is next.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait.
Yeah, if there's no other discussion. On, yeah, we can talk about housing priorities, residency district.
Oh, so I was simply going to say that, um, that the zoning history was very interesting and thank you very much for, for doing that. One of the things that whoever is presenting a town meeting about. Um, will be, whoever will be doing it, um. That might be, might consider saying is that the negative or the anti. Other types of housing other than single family and large blocks. Was essentially only thirteen years. Uh, there were only thirteen years of zoning changes that were made. Over eighty years since nineteen forty-five. So it was a relatively short time. I don't know if that would be helpful to many people, but. It was a relatively short time that those changes were made, those. Point negative changes were made. So I found that very interesting.
Say, uh.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Gittens.
Yeah, in, in the miscellaneous, uh, folder that, that went out in the, the package. Uh, Tony included, uh, a copy of Amy Dane's report. I'm exclusionary by design and. Uh, there's a video summary of, of that report. If you don't care to read the whole thing, it's, you can. Google it and, you know, look it up on YouTube. It's about a twenty-five minute or so video. I'm, and yeah, it's. I'm, uh, her, her study really does kind of overlap. I'm with the, the changes that, I'm, that we see here, I, in Bedford's. Zoning bylaws, I'm to make them more restrictive. I mean, it wasn't. Wasn't just Bedford becoming more restrictive over that period. Um, it was really all of that kind of MBTA communities. Uh, zone. I, so I'd say even if you don't have time to read, um, the report, you know. Definitely recommend, um, the, uh, the video on YouTube. I'm really a good summary and provide some context.
Thank you, Mr. Gittens. Um, I'll definitely, we'll look that up. Um, I think, uh, an interesting data point. With this is the population of Bedford. Um, how quickly it actually went up. From, and I don't have the exact, I was just looking this up and I apologize and I'm running, it was like, it was five thousand in nineteen forty-five. And then it was ten thousand and then it was twelve thousand and, and then it's been like flat since seventy-six. Twelve, twelve to fourteen, you know, we're up to fourteen, but you know, like relatively compared to the jump up and. So there was some context in terms of it, number one. Um, number two, I've had a lot of discussions that work with various individuals that live in Bedford. And at, at the Maida Corporation and, uh, you know, I, I am, um, let's see. Considering how this changed over time, um, I do think it behooves us to do something. I. I'm just cautionary in terms of, well, if we go back to the way it was, you know, originally set. With seventy-five hundred square feet, like what does that mean? What, what, how, how, how is that going to change everything? Because. I don't know, is it, or do we need to take, uh, small, smaller steps along the way? Uh, is this sort of the questions I have? I feel like the board in general feels like something should be done. Um, and I just question what, how much at one time should be done. I don't know how far we want to go with this discussion or if people want to discuss more. Cause we're aiming for spring.
I really appreciated the, the data and this is, uh, uh, Amanda, thank you so much for this. This is great. I'm, I am not feeling the need to discussion tonight. I'm thinking we have prioritize, you know, what, what's coming up. I'm for, for town meeting. I'm. Yeah, I certainly happy to, to discuss, you know, information here, but. I'm kind of looking ahead to, uh, engaging more in this, you know, over the winter and. Yeah, approaching, uh, town meeting, uh, in twenty twenty-five.
That sounds good to me.
I would agree with that as well as saying it's only three of us right now. And we're soon going to be appointing someone else who was, needs to be part of this discussion as well.
Great point. Sounds good. Um. Okay. Update on potential zoning bylaw amendments for special meeting. We did that. All right. I think we're on to planning board liaison to boards and committee reports. Well, I'll go first. Um, uh, Back and Tac had a joint meeting, uh, last week, I think. And, uh, I don't know if everyone saw the, the Bedford citizen article, um, but, um. The DPW slash town, they're proposing, uh, the intersection of Route sixty-two where the, uh, reformer tree branch rail crosses. To add, um, very quickly, I'm not sure exact timeline, but it's within the next few weeks or month or is, uh. Some sort of, um, breakaway pylon type structures they're still looking into. These are kind of rubberish with a rubber base. So if they were hit, they, they could be knocked down, but, uh, basically right on the white lines. I don't know if you guys saw the drawing or not. Um, I don't have it in PDF form unfortunately right in front of me, but. Um, so it's going to be on either side and effectively the goal is to slow down traffic through that area for now. Uh, recognizing that this is just a temporary. Solution to do something quickly, um, and then to be researching more other solutions over time. Um, because any other solution will obviously cost money if it's a, um, uh, yeah. Traffic light, um. Or hawk system or moving trail a little bit, or I don't know, there was a ton of discussion at Tac and Back about different options. Um, but there was a goal, a very strong goal to do something now. To get something there and then to, to give us time to discuss going forward, uh, what to do there. So, um, yeah, it was, it was a very good meeting, very productive meeting. Uh, that's what I have. Anybody else?
Nothing burdened.
Okay, um, on to staff updates.
Um, just, um. Just to, I guess, um, just looking ahead, there are, um, we've had more. More discussion, the already, it's only Tuesday, already had more discussion this week on potential MBTA. Uh, community multifamily proposals.
Can you clarify that?
One of which, so I'd like, I think in my preview, I had said, you know, we have a. Four unit proposal on the horizon and a seven unit proposal on the horizon.
Yes.
The seven unit proposal. Uh, has expanded because it looks like they're going to acquire the adjoining property. So two half acre lots. Might be merged to create a fifteen unit proposal rather than two. Seven unit proposals, so.
Wow. Do you, can you say where that is or no?
Uh, one's on Loomis, one's on Weber. Well, four unit project on Weber, seven, uh, should be fifteen on Loomis. Is, um, is, so there's some on, you know, there are a handful of tenant changes coming. Uh, where, um. Let's say we, where, um. Where Pepper's Grill used to be in the Great Road Shopping Center, we are expecting that to become a Blackbird Cafe, which is a small. Regional chain and, um. The, well, the former Top Cleaners at. Three, what's that address? Three forty-seven-ish or something. So the, the small three unit strip mall that is where Versa to Punjab is. Used to have a Bank of America ATM and Top Cleaners as the other tenants. Um, Euphoria Coffee, which is. Um, has a little, it's just a family run little coffee shop in Chelmsford is looking to create a second location here. Um, and then the, the remaining, it's only about a thousand square foot. Tenant space in the middle is probably going to become a nail salon. And then, um. So those are just some small things happening in, um, in the Shawshin district. Um, otherwise we, you know, we're still watching the. Very slow pace of, of, um, Fitz's package store evolution into. Hopefully Prince Street Cafe and, um. Uh, but progress has happened, the duplex on Fletcher that was part of the. That part of the town center project is underway and, um. The former Papagino site is making better progress as they've, they've been, uh. Finally seemingly able to overcome some, some technical issues that existed last year. So, um. Uh, so those, those are happening. The multifamily at the, at, uh, Plank Street and Mental Sex Turnpike. Um, has mostly been doing interior work, so it's hard for us to judge what's happening, but code tells me they were asked to do. Some inspections on the third floor recently, so that's, um. That's still moving along, but not as quick as we anticipated and, uh, they seem, they don't. This group is out of Connecticut and have not, has, in my observation, has not done a project in Massachusetts before, so. Some staff were a little worried that they don't really grasp the timeline to get the affordable component coordinated. Um, so we keep pushing them to try to get that resolved. Although I'm not sure they're going to be as ready for a certificate of occupancy as they might hope, so. They'll, 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 well, they need to deal with the affordable housing. Criteria before they get a CO, so they, they, we just want to make sure they really understand that.
Tony, what about that hotel, um, on the far end of Crosby Drive?
Yeah. So I, earlier this year, uh, Jasmine, Jasmine Hotel Management had reached out. Uh, and you had, you know, they had requested an extension of time and we also dealt with the conveyance of the land between Fuji. And the subject site and, um, they had reached out and, you know, we had anticipated at the time of approval that. Um, the even, E V E N, even hotel brand was going to be the brand of the. Of the hotel. Um, but that. Um, but that, you know, and then the pandemic set in. So in the meantime, um, Jasmine Hotel Management had said they wanted to sit down and talk about a couple of Hilton branded opera, options that were being discussed as alternatives, as well as having the restaurant not be a separate pad, but actually incorporated in the footprint of the hotel. Um, but we haven't had that meeting. Uh, so I think that's still kind of out there, but, um, but I don't have an update because, uh, because we haven't, we have not been able to sit down and talk about these alternative brands, but which just, you know, involves some minor reconfiguration of the parking around the building. Uh, the changes I had seen, um, or would probably be favorable in, you know, fire departments. Um, a pit, you know, like thinking about emergency access around the building would be better in the, in this revised, uh, drive, in, in the revised driveway layout. It's not huge. Uh, it's not a huge change, just some really minor things, but it, 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 I think it would flow slightly better. So. But, um, so that's, that's, that's kind of out there. Uh, the other project that it's, is, is started, two other projects started construction is, uh, if you recall, you authorized some changes to the facades and parking layout at Aspen Tech at 20 to 22, no, 20, yeah, 2022, um, Crosby Drive, which is part of the big anchor line, what's now the Anchor Line Campus. And, um, so that, like the horseshoe parking lot between Crosby Drive and the front face of Aspen is all dug up. The, um, the, the existing loading docks, which were, which face Route three, but are becoming the new front door and, and public access, or, you know, the public face of the company. Um, that is under, you know, so that's under active construction, the new loading dock on the north side of the building is under active construction. And then, uh, a little bit also staying on Crosby Drive, 35 Crosby, which used to be Whole Logic and is now going to be mostly occupied by a company called Persimmons. Um, the construction is underway there. And so some of the site improvements and interior modifications are underway. That company's taking probably 60% of the building. So the northern 40, 35 to 40% of the building is still looking for a tenant, but, um, but the site improvements there are underway.
Any movement from STR or?
Um, STR, as I understand it, STR is still negotiating final, uh, terms with the property owner. So even, so yes, town meeting, uh, approved the tax agreement financing deal. But as I understand it, there's still some ongoing negotiations about the actual lease terms.
Cause that is directly going to affect Miter for sure. For sure. We've already lost a lot of people to them.
Miter's lost people to STR?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes, yes. At their Woburn location. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, um, Lantheus has also started work on, uh, there, if you recall, Lantheus is occupying part of 201 Burlington Road. They're occupying the back building and some of the front building. The front building includes a clean lab. Uh, they were making some modifications to the clean lab and adding an emergency generator, which, um, Concom also proved in there. So they're starting, they've dug up the area where the emergency generator is going to go. And so we're monitoring that along with conservation staff to make sure it's done under all the proper criteria.
All right. Thank you.
Is that it for you, Tony? I, I attended, I attended the magic meeting last week, um, last Tuesday. Um, the present, there was a presentation about, what's it called? Uh, the Massachusetts Food System Collaborative. Um, obviously we don't have a lot of agriculture, but if any of you are interested, I think they circulated the slides afterwards. So just let me know if you want to take an interest. Um, the other main thing was they were doing, um, a check upon, um, progress on the MBTA community zoning, um, which was the slightly amusing scenario of MAPC trying to find out what's going to happen, to be honest. The EHLC website that's supposed to track progress of different towns seemed to be pretty out of date last time I looked. Um, so, uh, I think MAPC was getting frustrated coming to ask us. Um, so in the magic communities, uh, Bolton and Hudson don't have to comply because they're, they're not adjacent to town head stations. Um, let's see what tells, um, eight towns have passed MBTA community zoning at the town meetings and the AG has approved all of those. Um, I don't know whether some are conditional or, you know, with, with cautions like ours where, you know, additional changes might be desirable. Um, some have done a financial analysis where they wanted to include an affordable unit requirement. Um, I think most of those have been improved. The one said they'd had it reduced from 20% to 18%, which seemed a bit odd. Um, I don't know quite how many of them have submitted to EHLC yet. Um, Maine had said they expected to submit theirs soon. So I think it was a bit patchy around that side of it. Um, so MAPC was sort of looking to, to hear if there are any sticking points and kind of get involved in the action, I think. But, but there wasn't really much revealed about what, what was happening about those finer points. Um, yeah, so those were the main points. Oh, well, I, while I remember the November, the 12th planning board meeting was scheduled to be, um, a six o'clock meeting before special town meeting, but the special town meeting date has changed. Um, so we've changed the meeting time on the website to the normal seven o'clock. So I'm assuming we will still have a meeting on November 12th.
Sounds good. Thank you. Um, thank you, Catherine. If I can have a quick go back, I'm sorry. I was thinking through my notes in terms of Tac back. And there was lots of other things that were discussed, um, some of which you guys may know, I'm trying to be very quick. Um, but the, the, the traffic slowdowns around Great Road, um, you know, I think, uh, Bedford got a grant, they had to spend like, I think it's 500,000 by the end of 2026, but there's going to be synchronized lights, coordinated system, like Loomis through Mudway. Um, I don't know if you guys know that or not. Um, but yeah. And part of that, it's great because, because of the fire station reworking as well. That's part of that as well. So, cause there'll be a new light there. Um, at, uh, Bacon, oh, yeah, Bacon and, and, uh, Great Road. And that'll hopefully also fix that area a bit with the, uh, crosswalk and everything as well. So, um, and then there was a lot of discussion about, uh, the Town Common renovation project. Um, where the feedback was taken from the town meeting and, uh, there's a lot of discussion about, it's mainly maintenance, um, to be, to be honest. So, well, first off, there's a goal to have it done by the 300th anniversary. Um, and if it doesn't get approved at this town meeting, um, then it won't happen until after the 300th. Because like, we have to get the, the design FY26 and then FY27 will be construction. So it'll be done by the 300th anniversary. Um, but everything to discuss attack and back. And I think again, there was a, a citizen article. Um, but, uh, it's just trying to make, you know, the walkways are an end of life. The lighting is, is old, um, it needs maintenance. So there's a lot of like basically sidewalk construction. Maybe one new path going towards Springs Road to, to get people to walk that way. Um, maybe it's sort of getting rid of the path that goes directly to South Road, um, because there's no crosswalk and you can't put a crosswalk there. It's too dangerous. Um, and, and trying to direct people to go up to, to the Springs Road, Great Road intersection. There's not, there's not a connection there right now. Um, but, um, talking about MBTA structure and, um, trees and, and so forth. So, and some bump outs trying to make it a bit safer, um, near where Kenz is right now. Um, so nothing massive, but, uh, minor improvements to the area, but nothing crazy. Um, go ahead, Ms. Lloyd.
I just had a question for Tony or Catherine. By any chance, I know that that crosswalk was originally there over to Old Town Hall. And then it had to be taken out because it was, um, not allowed to be so close to an intersection. Do you by any chance know how many feet from an intersection, a crosswalk is allowed to be? I'm just curious. I was actually thinking about that the other day.
I don't know that.
Um, I can't cite, um, we all will, I'll look it up. Um, typically, you know, the goal is to have the crosswalks be at, you know, at the intersection. And then you get into, you know, is this, you know, how far is the, is the crosswalk actually set back from the edge of pavement of, of one or both roads? And it, and it, it, so we even add an intersection, it gets questionable. Um, but then there are, um, and then there's a range where the crosswalk, if it's set back, you know, like something between like 10 and 30 feet, it, it becomes actually more dangerous. And, um, and so it's, you know, so it's either put it at the intersection or some distance away. And I, um, off the top of my head, don't recall what that number is.
I'm mostly just curious if there, if that Maple Street across, uh, South Road, if that is far enough away that a crosswalk could be there.
That was under discussion, actually.
Yeah, right. And those, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the more, that's the more logical place to put it.
Yes.
Right.
Rather than connecting the mid sidewalk in front of the church to Old Town Hall.
And you see, I see a lot of people crossing there.
Um, right. And that is aware and that's under discussion.
Yeah. So that's the towns, the towns got to weigh, you know, the, whether that's, um, something to pursue or discourage.
Um, sorry, and I'm going to have to go back, Tony. Uh, I think it was a citizen article, um, regarding, uh, Coral Road and the, the select board's ask of one sidewalk, which you mentioned, but two, I thought there was, um, potentially some, the intersection of North Road and Coral Road in terms of any intersection improvements there. And I thought the select board had requested something about that.
Yeah.
That was part of the discussions that you were having.
Yeah. So part of the, yeah. So that, what I don't know is whether we're simply going to ask them for financial contribution to design the intersection improvement or to actually perform some physical improvements.
Okay. But that's under discussion. I just want to make sure that's.
Yes.
Okay. All right. The, the citizen article made it seem like that was not under discussion. So I.
Well, I don't know. It, it had been and as, as, as I noted in my mind, that is part of the public benefit for which the town agrees to be a co-sponsor of the application.
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion or we have the minutes from August 27th, which is amazing. Any discussion on the minutes?
Move through, approve the minutes of August 27th.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by a blurry, Mr. Gittens and a second by Ms. Lloyd. Uh, Mr. Gittens?
Aye.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Thank you very much, Amanda. Um, all right. With that, I think we're done.
Move to adjourn.
Four minutes added schedule. Um, first one by Mr. Gittens, second one by Ms. Lloyd, Mr. Gittens?
Aye.
Ms. Lloyd?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Discussion.
Good night.
Good night.
See you on Bedford Day.